Good evening, everyone. We're calling to order our regularly scheduled School Board of Education meeting for today, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We would like to begin with our pledge of allegiance. And our pledge of allegiance are going to be done by two magnificent members of our Ellendale School, Kennedy Hall, who's the daughter of Daniel, and Emily Hall, as well as Paisley Winters was the daughter of Christopher and Kelly Winters. Join us all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you. Great job. I think those two young ladies deserve a round of applause. So next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have one motion approved and two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The board has approved the agenda as follows. So the next agenda item is honors and recognitions. Dr. Hefner, you have the floor.
Thank you, board members. I'm just so grateful to have this opportunity every month. It is no secret, this is my favorite part of the entire meeting. Anytime that we can celebrate students and staff, it's a good day in the Alexander County school system. Tonight, I would like to start our honors and recognitions talking about National Board Certification for Teachers. National Boards are the most respected professional certification available in education. It provides numerous benefits to teachers, students, and schools. National Boards were designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvements in schools nationwide. Board Member Ryan, will you come up and help me with these presentations? We have two teachers this evening who've earned their National Board Certification for the very first time, and then eleven more who renewed their National Board Certifications this fall. These Alexander County teachers add their names to the list of other teachers in North Carolina, which by the way, ranks first in the country for the number of nationally board certified teachers. According to the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, twenty-four percent of North Carolina's teachers have earned the certification. Here in the Alexander County school system, I'm proud to report that seventy-one of our teachers, counselors, and certified staff members have National Board Certification.
Wow.
That deserves a round of applause. Those who newly earned the credentials are Dixie Cascaden, teacher at East Alexander Middle School. Please come forward. Also, first time recipient, so proud of Dawn Robinett, teacher at West Alexander Middle School. Yes. Another round of applause.
Good job, Dawn.
Next are the teachers who renewed National Boards this fall. We're going to start with Josh Bowles, teacher, Alexander Central High School. Next, we have Scotty Cook, also a teacher at Alexander Central High School. Kimberly Burgess Curry, counselor, Sugarloaf Elementary School. Natasha Haas, teacher, Alexander Central High School. Heidi Hefner, teacher, West Alexander Middle School. Tyler Mitchell, teacher, Alexander Central High School. Sonya Tig, teacher, Bethlehem Elementary School. Adam Walker, teacher, Alexander Central High School. Chrissy Williams, teacher, Bethlehem Elementary School.
Good job, neighbor.
And Michael Mays, teacher, West Alexander Middle School. I am so very proud of all of you.
Great job.
Board Member Bowman, will you help me with the next recognition? This school just happens to be in your district. How many of you do Facebook? Sometimes I'm embarrassed to admit that, but yeah, I do, I do. How many of you voted for Danielle Ortiz? How many of you were able to vote multiple times for Danielle Ortiz? We are going to recognize Danielle Ortiz from Bethlehem Elementary and her team. They're going to come to the front of the room. And for those of you who don't Facebook and you didn't hear about this, there was a competition recently where we were able to go on social media and vote for her. And as a result, Ms. Ortiz receives a forty thousand dollar grant to fund a classroom makeover from a classroom furniture company. Wow, wow. Mrs. Ortiz was competing against two other teachers on the eastern side of the United States for this award. One was in the Atlanta area, the other in Boston. Principal Intern Kat Sino and Principal at Bethlehem, Charles Draper, helped organize and promote this project, so we thank both of you. Ms. Ortiz was able to win through a public vote, which was published statewide since she was the only contestant in North Carolina. The new furniture will replace some pieces in her classroom that are more than twenty years old, and she hopes it will make the classroom more functional for the children. I say congratulations to Danielle Ortiz and her team. I cannot wait to see the transformation. Please come forward, team. Come this way, just a little bit. Another round of applause.
Good job.
Lastly, Board Member Robinson, if you'll come help. This person being recognized is in your district. I want to recognize Mara Holler from Ellendale Elementary School. While working with our district full-time, Ms. Holler is also going to Gardner Web University to earn a teaching degree. Ms. Holler has earned tuition reimbursement from local funding called ACAT, the Alexander County Aspiring Teachers Program. This program was developed in hopes of supporting teaching assistance while they work toward earning a state license. The goal is then for those staff members to work in Alexander County as teachers. This money is available to teaching candidates in conjunction with the support of the Alexander County Public Education Foundation. Please come forward, Ms. Holler.
Great job, Mara.
Principal Katie Nash will join her for the picture. Wonderful. Ms. Holler, you are the first recipient. Way to go.
Great job.
Next on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments? No, no one has signed up for public comment? Very well. So then next on the agenda will be to enter the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the board?
I make your motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, are all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. By unanimous decision, a consent agenda is approved. So third is reports. First will be Ellendale Elementary School update, Ms. Nash.
You don't need to leave so soon. Have a great weekend.
Good job. That's good.
We heard you were singing. Thank you. They call me up.
Well, good evening Chairman Argüés, Vice Chair Reese, board members and Dr. Hefner. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come out tonight and report on my home away from home, Ellendale Elementary School. So who we are? We have currently two hundred and one students. We have twelve classroom teachers, four specialists, eight TAs, and then you can see the rest of the team noted on there. It truly does take the team to make our entire school successful. Coming from a secondary background, this elementary world is new for me. But let me tell you one thing, we celebrate big in elementary school. And if you have never experienced a birthday in kindergarten, you are missing out. I mean, I had a hat and everything. So they really celebrate in elementary school. We are a leader in me White House school, and just what this means is it gives our students additional opportunities to grow as leaders and then showcase their abilities. We do have leadership opportunities for our students throughout the building. They apply for these jobs, and they are based on their interests and then specific skills, and then we cater to those. So just some of our jobs that we have include media helpers, recital leaders, morning greeters for the car riders when they come in, and student White House representatives, just to name a few. The two young ladies that were here tonight for the pledge, they are part of our student White House representative. So as you can see by our motto at Ellendale, we truly do believe that every child can be successful. We recite this motto as a staff, as students, as a school, every day in our morning announcements. And it really is what we live by. So I just wanted to take a moment to update you on our school improvement goals and where we are for the year. So for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, Ellendale was a C school. We did not meet our academic proficiency goals, or we did meet our academic proficiency goals, but we did not grow as a school. So our school improvement team felt that that was definitely a big identified need this year, and that is something that we are currently working on. And I do believe that middle of the way through the year, after looking at our data, we are on track to meet that goal. Since COVID as a district, we really are working to recoup our average student daily attendance, and at Ellendale, we are looking to do that too. We started the, or ended the year last year with ninety-two percent, which is fairly low. And so our school improvement team identified that as a need, and we're looking to up that to ninety-four percent this year. We have been working with families constantly, once they hit some lower milestones, just to reach out to them about the importance of their child being in school. And then we do offer incentives for students that are there and have positive attendance. We do offer those periodically. And then one of my first actions as principal was to give teachers over the summer an opportunity to express needs and also some areas for growth and things that are going well at Ellendale. So I had them come in in individual meetings over the summer, and the revolving topic was that we needed more family and community involvement. So that was our third school improvement goal for this year. Last year, we had about thirty percent student, or family and community involvement in our activities. And today, I checked today because we had our last event last night, our goal was sixty percent, and current to date, we're at sixty-six percent family and community engagement in our activity. So we felt like this was our highest areas of need for the school year and where we wanted to spend our focus this year. We love to celebrate at Ellendale. I definitely think in order to boost student and staff morale, it's essential that we highlight and celebrate the positive things that are going on. So the first ones you can see is our student spotlights, and these are just a few. We do have them every month, and they do highlight a leader in me habit of the month. So for this month, we are focusing on habit five, which is seek first to understand, then to be understood. Next, we have our staff members of the month. Those are voted on by all staff in the building. And I do want to give a shout out to Mr. Glenn Eckert. He does sponsor those for us through Horace Mann, and each month, teachers or staff that are picked, they get a plaque from Horace Mann, which is a nice touch added to that. And then lastly, we do highlight our academic successes. We took our kids in January, we, for the first semester, if they made the honor roll, we went to the movies in downtown Hickory, and that was a fun trip, and the kids really enjoyed that. So we try to highlight attendance successes, thanks everyone in the building, and also their academic successes. I wanted to highlight, since I talked about some of our parent and community involvement, just some things that we've had this year. We did host first nine-week conferences, and we had a ninety-eight percent attendance rate for those from parents, and that was, I thought they went really well. We did have our Fall Into Reading Night. You can see, we were roasting smores in the building because we were having a burn ban. So the smores did not work out. They took the whole to cook in the microwave, but we still had a good night. And then we had our Veterans Day assembly, and it was super special to me, and Dr. Hefner was there. We really got to celebrate some fine men and women that serve our country. And you can see by the one picture, we had two fifth grade students who are on our flag patrol, and they presented, they folded a flag and presented it to our oldest veteran that was there, and it was really special.
I can't remember. I know he was in his nineties, but do you remember how old he was?
I think he was ninety-three.
I thought so, yeah. And another one very close behind.
Yes.
So you had at least two in their nineties there.
At least over there. It was really special. We hosted our Winter Fest in December, and then last night, we had our Fall in Love with Math Night, and we had a good turnout for that. So those are just a couple of pictures from those events. It was so great to see families in our building and learning. Last night, we had anywhere from kindergarten up to fifth grade. Fifth grade was, they were working on fractions, and families were doing it with them, and it was really great to see. So be on the lookout for our Leadership Day. It will be coming this spring, and you are invited.
Wonderful.
Next, I just want to give a big thank you to our community partners. We truly could not make it without these people. I did want to highlight from our community partners, we were able to have all forty-three of our Christmas benevolence families, they were all sponsored by the end of October. So I mean, we had a wonderful turnout, and it's all from the community that we were able to sponsor those families. So without them, we truly wouldn't be able to do all that we do in the building with, our students are faced with a lot of need, and this helps them be able to come to school and want to be successful. Lastly, I just wanted to say that we have had a very successful start to the school year. As my first year in elementary school, I just really can't see what the, wait to see what the remainder of the year holds, and I'm very proud to be a Tiger. So thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions?
How do you get the word out for parents to come to the community?
Yeah.
Is that something you're cold calling, or?
We do call. I have found that we have more response when we text. So I do send out texts, we send it out on Dojo as well, and then we put it on at least once or twice a week on Facebook, and just having it in their face, they seem, you know, to have come out. We also send home flyers once or twice in their homework folders, and so I think the earlier you can advertise, the better the turnout will be, is what we have found this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So next is our Student Success Center update by Amy Johnson.
Good evening, Board Chair Argüés, Vice Chair Reese, the rest of the board members, and Dr. Hefner. Thank you for having me tonight. I don't know if I can beat Ellendale, that's pretty fun and impressive over there, so, but I'll do my best. So here, I put a quote on here, because this is kind of the quote that we've been living by this year. It's actually on a notebook that all of our staff and students have, and I've shared one with the board as well. A hero is an ordinary individual who finds strength to persevere and endure in spite of overwhelming obstacles. And we've been living by that this year because most of the students in our building have just overcome extreme obstacles to get where they are. And we just want to remind them that although it's hard work, you can make it, and we've got some proof of that tonight to share. So that's where we start. So a little bit about Student Success Center. We have two middle school teachers, two high school teachers, one exceptional children's teacher, one teacher assistant, a halftime counselor, a halftime school social worker, a school secretary, dad manager, finance, everything, she does it all, and an SRO, which is new for us, so we're super grateful for that. And these people make up SSC. They are the reason that we are as successful as we are. It is a hard job, not everybody wants to be there, but these people love what they do, and I don't foresee them going anywhere. They love working with our students, so I could not do what we do without them. We had two goals for SSC this year. The first one was to reduce the average number of days out of school for suspensions by fifty percent within this academic school year, and that's a huge goal for us, especially because our population is so transient, it fluctuates. We do get a lot of high need students who have a lot of behavior issues, and sometimes sending them home is the only thing we can do when they get to that really high level. And we have been trying really hard to bring that down this year, so we are working on that, and you'll get to see where we're at with that. And then our second goal was just to enhance academic achievement, engaging them in the online ed mentum, along with trying to give them some other opportunities that will help engage them outside of this online platform that we're on, because it can be boring, and we know our kids get bored, so we've got to figure out how to engage them and get them interested in school again. So you'll see what we did with that this year as well. So this first slide, the way we started our plan this year was to go back to our behavior matrix, which we call CHOICE. And it is all based on C-H-O-I-C-E, commitment, honor, opportunity, integrity, collaboration, and encouragement. And this is what we live by every day at SSC. It's your choice, your chance, and it's your change. We tell our students every day, we can't work harder than you. You have to want it, you have to do it, and you will do it. And so we live by this matrix every day. When our students make choices, good and bad, this is what we refer to. And so this is what's helping guide our two goals this year. We even have gotten to the point where our, we created a second version of this, which is kind of the consequences of when you don't meet these expectations, when you don't show commitment and honor to your classmates in the hallway. This is what it's going to look like. So there's a second one of those that we've started working on this year, and it's helped us a lot, because it reminds them, without us having to remind them verbally, this is what's going to happen if you don't make that commitment, and that seems to be helping. So today, I'm going to focus on each of those letters. First with commitment. Commitment to reach destination graduation. We have served about twenty-six students so far this year. Six of those students have, six of them have transitioned back to their homeschool successfully, meaning that they have either gone back at the end of last year or sometime this year, and they are doing great. So we had two that went to the early college. One of them actually was a middle schooler last year who started with us in the fall, continued with us in the fall, and when she was time, when it was time for her to transition back, she said, I'd really like to stay back home to the early college. And so thankfully, Ms. Brown and her team were able to help make that happen for her, and I'm hoping it's going to be a good place for her. So thank you, Ms. Brown, for that. We have two that have gone back to Alexander Central and two to East Alexander. We have two students that are currently attending the high school for one or more classes. They are taking masonry, they are taking art, and I believe, what's my other one? I think ag science maybe? So we've got them trying to find their interest, so they'll want to go back to the high school or at least find something to do later on. We have three December graduates, which this was huge for us. Two are now working full-time, and one is working part-time and starting cosmetology school. I can tell you right now, those three students, had they not been at the Student Success Center, would not have graduated. And I say that because they would tell you that themselves. These students worked really hard to get Um, these students worked really hard to get out in December, and they're being very successful. Um, we've actually kept in touch with them, so we know what they're doing. I wanted to put this little bit of data statistics in there because I think this is really important. There is a study that says that any student that does not graduate with a high school diploma, on average, that's four thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, I believe, that you lose in a year for your community and for your state. So you think about that, that's thirteen thousand dollars we saved, our community and our state, just from those three kids getting a diploma and going out and get a job, that they couldn't have gotten without that diploma. Um, that's eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars over a lifetime. Last year, we graduated, I believe, six or seven students. Just think about that number. I can tell you the ones last year would have been the same way. They probably would not have graduated had the Student Success Center not been an option for them, and they would totally that. Um, last, the kids we had graduate at the end of last year, I've got one going to the military. I have some working full-time, some in community college. They're all being successful. And that's the purpose of our su- our Student Success Center. They've all shown commitment. And these pictures that are here, um, this shows the commitment of our newest students. They are making vision boards for what their destination is after graduation. And so our counselor, Ms. Mash, has been working really hard with them to create a vision and a goal. Um, who are their people? Who's their circle? What are the things that they can control? And this is their vision for their future, so. Honor. This goes into our first um goal, first little improvement plan. Days of suspension. I've got two graphs here. Um, you can see the first one is total days of suspension at SSC. Last year in fall of two thousand twenty-two, you can see that first bar. The second bar is um fall of two, is this past fall, we're down fifty-eight percent so far this year, and I see that even getting better. Um, our kids are following the rules. They are um doing what is asked of them. When they struggle, they're asking for help. They're asking to be separated. They're asking for that timeout. Um, we're not having to make them do that, and it is showing. And some of these students are the same students that were here last year, so this isn't like, you know, all new students. This is a lot of the same kiddos that we're talking about from last year, as well as some new ones. Um, the other graph there is our incidence for this fall, and you can compare what were the behaviors the kids were doing last year versus this year. The yellow is last year. You can see there's a lot that aren't happening this year. We've not had anybody destroy property. We've not had anybody communicate threats. We've not had um anybody trying to remember all the ones. There's so many of them, and I can't even read myself. Aggressive behavior. I've had no aggressive behavior this year, y'all. That is a celebration. Um, the things that are up.
I knocked on woods for you, Ms. Johnson.
I know. I do it every day.
I did. I knocked on woods for you.
Celebrate. I do that. But um, our, we do have a few things that are up, and those honestly are kind of anomalies. Um, there are like one student who just came in and really struggled, but I can tell you that the student that has kind of helped that blue go up above is actually being extremely successful this semester. We got her some support outside of school. We've got DJJ involved. Um, we've got a lot of extra things going on with that student, and all the behavior she was showing last semester, she's not showing this semester, so that is a huge celebration for us, so. All right. Opportunity. Embracing by engaging in assigned tasks. So our kids, they are on ed mentum every day, which is an online um resource for us to do all of our learning. But our kids need more than that, so we have to get creative in our small space. So my teachers have run with that this year. I've challenged them. I need you to get creative, do things outside the box. So we've partnered with Alexander Cooperative Extension. They're coming in and doing um food labs with our students. They're learning how to cook healthy meals, and it's so funny because they're learning how to like chop up fruit, and they're learning how to cut tomatoes to make fresh salsa and make chicken quesadillas, but it's healthy. And they love doing the activity, but then they're like, this don't taste so good. But it's just because they're not used to the healthy foods, so we're really teaching them to enjoy healthy foods and to learn how to make them, because a lot of them don't do that at home. And they're enjoying it. You can see some of them cutting fruit, um, cutting up tomatoes for salsa. We also are trying to um create these partnerships with the high school. Thank you to Crystal Hoag and Ryan Lewis for inviting our students over to uh participate in the activities that they do over there. I think recently, they had a simulator trailer that the kids got to go on, and you can see some pictures of them doing some virtual reality stuff over there. I've got my student who's in masonry. He likes to touch everything. And Nathan Robinson has been a gem to work with him, to let him touch everything, and it really enjoy masonry. So um, our middle schoolers have made bread and butter. Um, they did a science experiment um that they titled "Winter Road Safety", and they had to um take ice, and they each had different materials to see whose ice would melt the fastest, and they loved that. And it was quite interesting what actually melted it the quickest. Um, so they're getting to do lots of things. Bridge Community is going to come back in and give us some opportunity for tutoring um and, as well as an art teacher again to help do some art with our kids. So lots of fun things happening with opportunity. Next is integrity. Um, in my actions and honoring the rights and differences of others. We do this in two big ways. We have Student of the Month, which our staff vote on. Um, that is just based on, are they doing the right things? Are they following directions? That is a huge celebration for our students. We take their picture. They get a um, they get gift cards that have been donated. They get a, like a plaque, and then their picture goes on our wall, and you can see a picture of our wall of fame, and they get to be in that center area all month long, and then we move them over for the next month. So anybody that walks in our building can see who our Students of the Month are. The other award this new this year is our Student Choice Award, and that's based on if our students are following our motto, our choice. Um, last, I think, two weeks ago, we did Commitment, so the person who won the award is the one who's been showing commitment. This next one is Honor. Our counselor goes in every two, she goes in two days a week. She teaches them lessons on honor, commitment, whatever the letter is. They do different activities, and then every two weeks, someone gets an award for practicing that skill. So that's just kind of some of our honors and some of our kiddos that have received that so far. The Student Choice Award has been a nice addition for our kids. Give them something to work for every other week and not just for the month, so. Cooperation. We have to teach a lot of that at Student Success Center, because that's a lot of reasons why some of them are here, because they just don't know how to cooperate sometimes, and that's okay. That's what we're there to teach them. So part of um that is having class agreements. I challenge every teacher to do class agreements with um our students, and they, they create that agreement themselves, and they sign it, and it hangs up in the room. You can see who's agreed to what, and they come up with some interesting rules and agreements, but um it's working. Um, we have our counselor who is phenomenal. She leads activities. We do outside time, which teaches them a lot of cooperation because they like to play games, and you gotta know how to do, have, play by the rules, um, or you can't play. And then a lot of team activities. We did a breakout box in math, so learning math skills on top of um working together as a team to get the surprise treats inside that box. So doing a lot of things to teach them cooperation without them even knowing. And the last one is encouragement. Um, encourage myself and others. We have guest speakers who come in, people who have a past of their own to share about their story. We've had people who were in an alternative setting at one point come in and say, look what I did. I'm now a police officer. I'm now a speaker. I go around the country speaking. You can do it too. We have our school celebrations, so we bring out everybody in the hallway when we celebrate our Student of the Month and our Student Choice Award. So it's not just me walking in and giving somebody an award. Everybody comes out and celebrates that person. Um, we do a lot of teamwork. They made over eighty Valentines for the senior center last week. And tomorrow, I have three of my students are going over for bingo and brunch at the senior center across the street. And they're going to deliver the Valentines and have, play bingo and have brunch with some of our seniors in the community, um, which they're really excited about, because some of them have never done that, so. And then me, the way that I try to help encourage students is I do a nine-week check-in. So I have a check-in sheet where we look at goals. Why are you here? How are you going to get out of here? Do you want to get out of here? Some of them don't. Um, what are we doing next? And so I get to do that every nine weeks with our kiddos, and that's a lot of fun, just to sit down and get some of that personal one-on-one time with them to talk to them. And that helps build that relationship for me and them, and that trust, because a lot of our kids have trust issues. And so this is a good way for them to trust me, so. That is SSC. I know I talked really fast, but I wanted to make sure I shared everything with you tonight, so. Any questions?
Glad to see you're incorporating the high school options that you have right there
Oh, we love it.
next to you. I kno- I know it used to be, it seemed like it was a issue uh being able to get so many students in the CTE classes in particular. And that's a golden opportunity for a lot of your students uh to see that some of them are entering the workforce, some of them are going on to vocational training. That's a golden opportunity right there, right beside you. Take advantage of it. I'm glad to see you're increasing.
Oh, I love it. Like I, and our kids love it. If they're willing to go and do it, and Mr. Lael and the teachers can make it happen, we will make it happen, because it's the best opportunity for them.
And, and your slide said you served twenty-six students this year, and, and you have students coming and going, graduating mid-year. Like on any given day, like how many would you have? I mean, I, I get twenty-six served.
Yeah.
What's your, like, what's your average daily?
Right now, we're averaging about twenty. Um, last year, I averaged up to thirty-two, so it just depends on the needs of the middle school and the high school. Um, we do have some higher need, needs kids this year than last year, so the twenty feels really good. Um, if you saw some of those behaviors, like the walking out of the building and the, um, we just got some higher need kids, so that twenty feels really good, but you know, we can safely serve about thirty-two if we had to. But the twenty is a really good number to fit them in the room, and that's about what we're averaging this year.
I think we built the building to serve about twenty-five, twenty-six.
And that's, that's about where we, where we are. That's where we started out this year, but with some transitions back. Um, our middle school room is full. Um, the middle school room shouldn't hold more than six kids, and that's where we're at right now, so. Um, because we only have one middle school room. We have two teachers, but they co-teach in that room together because I don't have another room. So they have to share that space um to teach our middle schoolers, so. That's a great question. Anything else?
It's no secret that this is what I dreamed about when I was named superintendent. The alternative school that we had at that time, you know, kids weren't attending. It was three hours in the evening, and to build this program and to hear this report makes my heart, it makes it very full, very happy, because this is what we dreamed when we did all that planning years ago.
Well, when you, you know, you're graduating ten kids that wouldn't have otherwise graduated, I think that's a success right there. And that's a success for our community.
And what it adds to, to the community and the county.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Hundred percent. So I love it, and it's a great place to be, so.
And you know what? Some of the most hurtful things that were said to me in the process was how would you even think of building a new building for those bad kids?
They're not bad.
I would love to know how many of you heard her talk about bad kids tonight. What she talked about was children that make bad decisions sometimes.
They struggle. They struggle a lot, and a lot of it's a mental health issue. A lot of mental health issues, a lot of things that are actually out of their control within their families, and it's the only thing they know. And so we're trying to teach them that there is more out there for them, and they're starting to see that.
And you're doing it so well.
Thank you.
It's just another, it's just another program where we're teaching kids where they're at, at all levels.
A hundred percent. Yeah. We're meeting them where they're at for sure, because I, it, when they're in a big setting, it's just hard to do that. You can do it, but it takes a lot, a lot of effort, and it just makes it a little bit easier when they can be in that smaller space, so.
Great work.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Curry will be sharing with us a mid-year iReady assessment update.
Thank you, Amy. That's a, that's a hard act to follow. You did a great job, and I'm, I'm just so proud of that school and the students. You know, they build those skills and that knowledge there, and they get that diploma, but then they go out in the community and they apply those skills. And it's those warm, social skills that are going to help them to keep those jobs. And, and every child deserves that, and I'm just so appreciative of that. These kids could enter our community as dropout, causing problems, or they can enter our community as a worker and somebody to contribute. So that's a warm fuzzy. Thank you. Mine's data, but it's good data. It's really good data. So, and I did not grab the clicker. Do we have a clicker here? I'm going to grab that, but I'll make it look weird. Okay, so this is our middle of the year academic data dive. So I wanted to give you a little bit of background information, since we have so many um new board members this year. What is iReady? iReady is an online program that helps us to personalize learning for students throughout the school year. And it's a necessary component of what we call a multi-tiered system of support. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a minute as well. It is a diagnostic and personalized instructional tool. We use the diagnostic portion for all of our K-eight students as a function of a multi-tiered system of support. Each school has access to licenses for twenty to thirty percent of their population. And during COVID, we had, we used some of the ESAR money for a hundred percent of our kids to have licenses. So they had to learn at home. They would have that personalized learning, and that would support what they were doing in the classroom. But we know that there is no replacement for the classroom teacher, and I think we've knocked that back just this year to twenty percent, and our results have really improved in iReady, so it's super exciting. What is an MTSS? I'm not going to read that whole thing to you, but what it basically is, is a multi-tiered system of support, where we're meeting children at the Student Success Center or in any of their settings where they are academically, socially, or um we call it social, emotional, behavioral, and through attendance. So you'll see each of the schools that spoke tonight, we're speaking on those three elements. It includes data, which we use iReady for that, systems, practices, and it's connected to school board policy, state school board policy. There you go, the components of MTSS. We do not have an option but to have in place a multi-tiered system of support. A multi-tiered system of support was not a requirement fifteen years ago, but we've had to develop this process over the years. So iReady is a nationally-normed assessment, and it is a universal screener, which is required by the state of North Carolina for a multi-tiered system of support. We use it to progress monitor students, and we want to have something very objective to look at that progress monitoring. So how did the district placements compare to benchmarks? This slide right here shows us, this is I'm reading, and it shows us the national year-to-date, North Carolina year-to-date, and the district year-to-date. So if you look at our, right there is kindergarten, first and second grade. You will see that in Alexander County, we have sixty percent of our students in the green, which is on grade level or very much above grade level. North Carolina is fifty-nine, and nationally, it's fifty-seven. So in little old Alexander County, we are outranking both the state and the nation. First grade, same is true. Second grade, not doing quite as well there, but we're not far from the benchmark. We're at forty-three, and North Carolina is at forty-six. And nationally, it's at forty-four percent in the green. Our third grade teachers, because of Read to Achieve, I believe, sixty-four percent of our third grade students are in the green at this point in the year, fifty-six percent in North Carolina, and fifty-four in the nation. So I think that's a really impressive statistic right there. That's on the next slide. You can also see the reds on the bottom, and we want to see that red number be smaller than the national year-to-date or the North Carolina year-to-date. And that's kind of the benchmark we set for ourselves. And so fourth, I've already talked about third, um, fourth is at thirty-eight in the green, and forty-one percent in North Carolina, and thirty-eight as a nation. So even where we are slightly off from the benchmark for North Carolina, we're pretty comparable with the state. And fifth grade? Fifth grade rocked it in both reading and math this year. I don't know what's going on in fifth grade, but we have forty-five percent in the green, and North Carolina, it's forty, and national norms are thirty-eight. Sixth, seventh, and eighth. We always wonder, because it seems like sometimes our middle schools, our children fall a little behind. But in the district, sixth grade was forty-eight percent in the green. North Carolina was only thirty-eight percent, and nationally, only thirty-six percent. Seventh grade, forty-one, thirty-nine in North Carolina, thirty-seven in the nation, and then forty-three, thirty-nine, and thirty-eight for eighth grade too. So in the majority of cases, in all grade levels except for two, we are outperforming both the nation and the state on this nationally-normed assessment. Now, we want to look at how we did compared to last year at this time. And this data can be a little bit misleading because we're comparing different groups of children, and that is even more truthful today than it was five years ago because of the COVID experience. So those littles that missed out on that first two years of school essentially, and had about maybe like and had about maybe like six months of learning as opposed to 24 or 18 months of learning, they miss a lot of vital instruction. So we want to see how our kids this year are doing compared to our kids last year at this same time. So I look at the 22, 23 data, and what I can see here is that kindergarten in, now, you look at kindergarten, there's no reds in kindergarten, right? Because it's really hard to be below grade level when you walk in the door. It takes a while to get below grade level. But you can see that we went from 69 to 60 in kindergarten. And then in first grade, so adding those numbers up, I can go through all of those. But what I want you to notice is that in most areas, our greens are growing and our reds are getting smaller. And that's what we want to see happening. In cases where it's not happening really well like that, I like to go back to the previous cohort and see what that cohort was the year before. So it might be that one of the grade levels, it looked like it decreased, or it stayed the same, maybe 41 to 41. And I would look back at what they were in the grade prior to see if they've actually grown that group, because that could be that COVID effect. And this is sixth, seventh, and eighth. Fifth grade ended up on this slide, too, I think, so that you can have that comparison. You can see in a lot of our data, as you're looking at it, that sixth grade has really moved the mark this year. Last year, we did not see so much growth in sixth grade. Seventh and eighth are staying a little flat-lined, and eighth had some good growth in math, I think it was. We'll talk about in a little bit. But you can see the reds. In sixth grade in particular, a lot fewer reds and more greens. And so that's the trend we want to see happening with the seventh graders next year and then the eighth graders after that.
Well, you can see the, the numbers go with the population. So the fifth grader, second, 22, 23, then becomes the current sixth grade. So you can see the distribution is tied to that population.
Yes.
It's not, it's not irrespective of the grade level, it's the population distribution as it moves through our system.
I would say that's true a lot of times, but not necessarily. Like, second and fourth grade struggled a little bit more, and it was not really tied to the population all the time. So it really takes digging in a little bit deeper. But I think this next chart, you'll find this really fascinating. This is the distribution of the schools. So if you look at, let me see if I can do the pointer. If you look at this, so we would expect them to be there. Look here.
That's awesome.
That's in reading. That is so exciting.
That's awesome.
So when we look at, they're making, they have a lot of ground to cover from the last year. This is pretty good. And you can see most of our schools have really gone high. Their kids are heaven, but when you look at that, they're not as far up, if that makes sense. So then we also, probably following this as a, we also look at grade level. So when I look at this grade level, you look at every grade. With your overall growth. So, they make 94% of the growth that we need at 44. And this is nationally, the national standards tend to be tougher. North Carolina doesn't typically do as well as the nation. So to me, this, this is data worth celebrating, but it also is data that we can problem solve. So if we look at this as a coach, I'm in a curriculum team, and we say, ooh, look at seventh grade and reading. What is going on in seventh grade and reading, you know, when they were 17 last year? And so we were really able to target middle grades with professional development. And so that enabled our coaches to go into problem solve and have conversations with the teachers there, hey, what's going on? And the level of rigor wasn't really transferring to the middle schools yet, but we see progress in that closing. So just as a reference, you can see that there are different shades of these things in all of these graphs that I'm going to be showing you. Green's good, red's not so good, yellow's not bad, especially if you started out in that really dark red. And we call some of those kiddos oranges, because they're almost up to the yellow. All right, so this is also very, very telling data. Oh, I have to use the mic. I like to walk.
Okay, so this is very telling data here. You may not see this too well if you're sitting out here, but this breaks down the components of reading. So you have phonological awareness, you have phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary, comprehension, and literature and informational text. These are the building blocks for reading. So when we're talking about phonological awareness, by the time children leave kindergarten or first grade, they should have very, very strong phonemic awareness. And we use, you've probably heard of it, Hagerty now, to teach phonemic awareness, because we saw that was a weakness that was preventing us from progressing to phonics. And so now we have a phonics program that's systematic, because there's a lot of transferring between schools. And this helps kids to decode words. So our phonics is that next step. So we do OG at most of our schools in kindergarten, first, and second grade. You will see some third grades at some schools still using it, because their core might need that, their core instruction. Vocabulary as a district has been very, very low for us across the board. PD has been a focus on vocabulary. We're doing curriculum development right now, looking at when we get new ELA standards, what are we going to do for a systematic phonics or vocabulary program? So that's our ELA data, but if you look at the BOY line, you can see how the number of greens have grown and the reds have shrunk. And that's what we want to see as a district. Okay, so now we're going to talk about math. So this is just the entire district. How do we compare? And you know that we largely use Engage New York for our math curriculum, but we're moving away from that a little bit. National year-to-date, you can see North Carolina is doing slightly better than the nation in math. And then we have the district, which is doing better than the state of North Carolina and the national. And here we are with the grade level breakdown. Again, there are no reds in kindergarten, because it's hard to come in below grade level. But these are the kids we're looking at, because you can see how those reds increase, and that's where some of those gaps catch them. And here's third, fourth, and fifth in math. And we want the far right-hand column of the district to be the most greens. And you can just kind of look across there and see that largely they are. Look at this sixth grade. Look at the national year-to-date. Look at North Carolina, and then look at the district. That is some impressive results for math in sixth grade. And I think that's really a combination of having a solid curriculum. But now we're moving beyond that curriculum, because those foundational skills have really been met through having a solid core. And I know you all are tired. I can see these kids. Are you tired of Engage New York? I know you are, but it was a necessary evil, I promise. You'll be better for it. Okay, so seventh grade and eighth grade. You know, it's just, to me, it's just, I know that we have awesome teachers and we have great instructional leaders in our schools. And with that, and the kids that we have in our building, and the parental support, it is no wonder that we're doing so much better than the state and the nation in these areas. See? Uh-oh. Okay. Okay, how have the placements changed from winter to winter? And so I like to look at the 21, 22, because that was the final year of COVID or the year after the big COVID. And so I like to compare those results, because that helps us to look at, are we, have we recovered from COVID? Have we recovered? And in some cases, you will see that we have. Look at the math in third grade. To me, I find that very interesting, because it seems like in 21, 22, we did better than we did in 22, 23, but then we've gained it back in 23, 24. And so when you're talking about a multi-tiered system of support, you problem solve this data. And you have to come up with a hypothesis as to why this happened. One reason we think this happened was because we were so focused on reading in third grade to the detriment of math in that year, because we were, third grade is that read-to-achieve year. And so we're super focused on getting their reading skills up, because we know that if they can't read, they're not going to be successful at that next level. And so I think we kind of let math go, because those were the kiddos that missed two years of phonics and phonemic awareness. So we had to cram all that extra in to have those kids ready to move on to fluency and comprehension and all the other skills that are needed in reading. Sixth, seventh, and eighth. The recovery is a little slower there, except in sixth grade. Look at that sixth grade math. So I would say that our sixth graders have fully recovered. Now we just have to help those seventh and eighth graders. Oh, I did it again. Okay, this is the one that I like the best, because I just think that this is very, very telling, because we're looking at 22, 23 compared to 23, 24. And so when we look at the individual schools, you can see that in almost all cases, the number of students in the green or the median number of growth has come up. That quadrant, when you talk with the iReady reps, anything above this line is fantastic. This is low performance, this is high growth. So if you are even on the side of low performance and you're meeting high growth, then you're going to eventually come over into that upper right-hand quadrant, which is where we want to see our kiddos. Remember, we were 44% through the line, or through the year, when we took this assessment. That bottom dot, I think that is east. But they still are on schedule to meet typical growth by the median. So a lot to celebrate. Looking at the grade levels, almost all grade levels, with the exception of seventh grade, have improved. So we're seeing a little pattern in math, aren't we, in seventh grade? So that's something that we need to look at. Does this align to our curriculum? What are we doing in seventh grade? That's where we problem solve that. Are we teaching the right things in seventh grade? Do we have the right people at the table in seventh grade? Do we have the right interventions going on? How can we support these kiddos to make sure they're ready? Just glancing at that again, you can see that our reds are decreasing and our greens are increasing, which is what we want to have happen at the middle of the year. If you look at the skills on the bottom, numbers and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, geometry is, we're not trending as strong in geometry. But why is that? Can somebody out there tell me? You know why it is, Amber Davis.
There are fewer questions.
Yes. Very good. See, see how they're smart they are? And it's a smaller chunk is what is assessed, so they don't spend a lot of time on it, and it comes later in the Engage curriculum. So we expect to see that come up, but that's how they problem solve that data. They sit around and they say, well, why is that not up there with everything else? And then we figure it out. So this is a classroom, a real classroom level of data. And of course, I've taken out teacher names and student names. But you can look at the median growth, or the growth of those students during that year. And this isn't all of the students, but you can see the students in this classroom. And this is how we get to that individual level. Like, we look at this child, he's made 177% of his growth for the school year, of what he should typically make. Okay. This child was working on a first grade level on the first assessment at the BOY, and now this child is working on a second grade level. So we're able to see some good progress there. And so what we're looking for in an MTSS is what we call stretch growth. If a child is making stretch growth, then they're going to close that gap eventually. So this is a sample of a child's assessment. And if you look, that when the child first came in on phonological awareness, this is a third grade student, they tested out. That means they had a great phonemic awareness program, which was probably Hagerty and phonics combined. Same with phonics, they had the MAC score, then they tested out on the second assessment. High-frequency words, the same thing. See how it's that dark green? Vocabulary, they started out on early third grade, they're in late third grade. So whatever that teacher is doing with that student is working in their vocabulary, because it's mid-year third grade, and they're already in late third grade. Comprehension for literature, started out in a grade two, and they're on grade level now, mid-third. Comprehension informational text, they've gone from a grade one to a grade two. So you can see how that individual child, the teacher would know where to intervene with that child. That's a lot of the work that the interventionists we hired with ESAR money were doing. Okay, so this is another child's example, a different child, and this is a sixth grader who came in in overall math at a grade five level. And we would have expected that child to come in on an early sixth, but they're at early sixth now. So we haven't seen a lot of movement there. But if you look at measurement and data, they came in at a mid-sixth, and then they left at an early six. So then we go back, too, we can see how long it took the child to take the test. Did they rush through? Do they have red flags? There's all sorts of analytical data that we can use, and we can pull other data in with that. This is the report that the parent gets or can have access to, and I blacked out the child's name. But this actually just says, "The test results suggest that the student would benefit from an intervention focused on skills and concepts related to quantitative reasoning and representation instruction that connects understanding of number relationships with computation." I don't have to read the whole thing. But it's very, very specific as to what that child's most immediate needs are in order to move the mark. So there's a component in iReady that will group students who have that same need. And we have developed what's called standard treatment protocols. We, meaning the coaches, have developed standard treatment protocols. And what that is, is a research-based intervention, which is a requirement of a multi-tiered system of support. And then we make sure that we're intervening with the appropriate intervention to meet those unique needs of that child and the other children that maybe share that unique need. So those groups are very flexible and change throughout the school year. Some schools are even doing multi-level, multi-grade level groups, because those skills are different. Also gives us an opportunity to really enrich those kids that are already above grade level through those intervention groups. Okay. So what is the role of the instructional coach in all of this? 10 years ago, we didn't have MTSS. Now we have, and we're required to have a multi-tiered system of support. The coach leads the problem-solving meetings, the PLC meetings. They analyze the problem, they analyze and problem-solve data at the district level, at the school level, at the grade level, and also at the individual teacher level. So they will work with a teacher. Each of the teachers plots their students on that quadrant map, so they can see which kids are growing at a high level and which kids they need to work with more. So it's very targeted at those individual kiddos. They design interventions and develop the standard treatment protocols aligned to specific deficits. They provide job-embedded professional development for teachers. They develop the core curriculum. When we first came back, we had to collapse some of the curriculum, because it was too much for kids, because they were behind. So they knew what they could collapse, and that would have the least impact on children. They also chair the student support team, and the student support team is that team that meets at least monthly. Parents are invited to that, that looks at all the individual data for the students and looks at whether or not the child is responding to the intervention. If the child is not responding, then we have to do additional interventions, or that child may be in need of an IEP or a 504. We know that might be what they need, because everything we've done as far as standard treatment protocols because everything we've done as far as standard treatment protocols, which are research-based, it's very, very analytical, they have not responded to at this point. And so they almost become like diagnosticians. They train the interventionists. They're training our PE teachers and our media coordinators and our ARP teachers. In a lot of our schools, everybody participates in intervention time. They document, document, document. And they lead that student support team, EC and 504 referrals for compliance. It used to be, prior to MTSS, when it was an EC referral process, it used to be the school counselor or an EC teacher that would lead that team. I'm getting dry from talking so much. I'm sure you're all tired of hearing too, but I've got the soapbox for just a few more minutes, so I'm going to tell you what they do. But they lead student support teams in EC and 504 referrals to make sure that we are in compliance with federal legislation. You know, the General Assembly has limited what counselors are able to do for us. Counselors are no longer allowed to be involved in any kind of testing or assessment. With good reason, because they're meeting the needs that are social, emotional of some of these children that are coming back with anxiety and some mental health issues. Thank you so much. So a lot of the duties that have been taken away from counselors, and because we have so many needs in our EC department right now, these coaches have taken on those roles and responsibilities as well. So I think that's all I have for you today. But that is our middle-of-the-year update. I think it's largely very, very positive. And I just want to thank all of our teachers and our principals for doing such a fantastic job and really not forgetting that these children are children, even though we look at a lot of data. If we don't have the data, we don't know that what we're doing is working. And it's so empowering to be able to see down to what specific skill a child needs a little support in, to be able to mediate that skill. So I suspect that we will continue to grow and grow and grow. Very excited about that. Thank you. Any questions?
In your professional opinion, you mentioned this a couple times, about the COVID effect. In your opinion, how long do we have left for the COVID effect in the data?
I think if you look at that data, you will see that we have largely recovered from COVID. I say we have recovered academically, but I think that there are still some issues with students with mental health and some anxiety and just from being out. I mean, it's taken every bit of two years, and it's taken the extra support that we've gotten from that ESAR money, hiring interventionists and having small groups of children, and really teachers working their tails off to pull these kids over the line. But you will see back to 21, 22, and largely, we are recovering. Couple grade levels, couple areas, but that's what we problem solve every year. That will never change. But we're doing better than the nation, and we're doing better than the state. And I would say that we are probably 90% recovered academically.
Thank you.
Socially, emotionally, I think is another story.
Dr. Curry, did, when you put the mic back in there, did you turn it off? I don't, I don't hear it working as well. Okay.
I'm just not as close to it.
Okay.
You know, this time last year, when it was our first time around, as many of our new board members going over your data, there was a lot of questions, a lot of commitments. And it's obvious that every one of your principals has delivered on the commitments that they had made of improvement and performance. And for that, I think that's a big shout-out and a congratulations to them for having done a great job. Point number one. Point number two, your elementary schools have significantly exceeded performance expectations, and especially in reading, right? Mathematics, they've exceeded, but reading significantly, and outpacing the middle schools in that reading performance improvement by almost 20%, 25%, you know, just doing rough averages. How, how is it that we've seen such dramatic improvement in the elementary schools? And what can we, what have we learned from that that we can apply to the middle schools to track accordingly?
That's not atypical because elementary kiddos don't have as far to go, if that makes sense. And whenever you see a transition in academics, when you have five years of solid elementary instruction, that will begin to translate into sixth grade performance. You can see that our sixth grades have closed that gap. I expect to see that, that group of children, when they go into seventh grade, will have closed that gap.
So the level of expectation is exponential, not linear, as you progress?
I don't know what that means.
When you're going into elementary school, it would be just like you're incrementally improving, but if you go into middle school, it's significantly higher expectation.
If you raise the level of rigor up here, when you do that for sixth and seventh grade, and they haven't had it K5, they can't meet those goals. But when you raise the level of rigor in an elementary school, those kids go to middle school better able. However, middle schools, it takes a while for that adjustment because they're not K6, they're not K8 school. So they're not moving at the same pace. But it takes a couple of years of saying, oh, what I'm doing is not really working. These kids really are more prepared than the kids that I had two or three years ago. I've got to change what I'm doing. And so having that, what we call efficacy or internal locus of control, where the teacher owns it and says, oh, I have to change what I'm doing in order to keep these children, because I have a different set of skills that are coming to me with these kids. And so that just takes time, and it's a very natural progression. And I think that we see that sixth grade has crossed that loop with this data, and I believe seventh grade will be next. And what you see with eighth grade doing a little better is sometimes, there's, there's a term called regression to the mean. So if our sixth graders come in doing very, very well, seventh grade, they're going to regress to the mean. It's a natural statistical thing, and then eighth grade is going to get the growth. So eighth grade might look better, but they're really not maybe doing anything than other than they regress to the mean in seventh grade. So now, I know this is complicated, but now I think our sixth graders going into seventh grade, put those seventh grade teachers on notice, oh my gosh, these kids coming to me are 65% in the green. What am I going to do to keep them there and move them to 70? And so that's the conversations that coaches and principals are having. When these children entered your classroom, they were 65% proficient on the EOG, and their BOY I Ready showed them to be 55 or 60% proficient. When they leave you, what are we going to do to make sure that they're 70% proficient? But having those conversations takes time. And it really takes people, nobody, nobody in this system, I would venture to say nobody, but maybe one or two. But nobody sets out not wanting to be a good teacher. I believe that our teachers are committed. They get frustrated sometimes because they maybe don't understand it, but they all want to do a good job and are willing to put in the time and effort to do that. And the greatest reward is having the data so you know where to work to have those results.
Data speaks volumes.
It does. And they're not just numbers. But if we don't have numbers, we can't treat the whole child. We can't minister, so to speak, to the whole child. And so we need that data to pinpoint where we do that work, where we spend our energy with that child. So they're more than a number, but that number helps us to treat the whole child, to minister to them. Any other questions? I know we waited a long time for this data. It just comes when it comes, and it's, it was worth the wait, I think.
Absolutely. Well done.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is our Board of Education Committee reports. We have a couple of committees that are going to be reporting on their new business. Are there any other committee reports that need to be brought up at this point?
I'll report on the Cougar Boosters. We've met. Booster Club is doing several things right now to help our spring sports. You'll be hearing more by next month. I'll give you some dates on their big spring steak and steak dinner rifle. And I think we should all recognize our high school cheerleaders. They've been at Disney this week and finished seventh in the nation, which is a good point. And just a big shout-out to our whole athletic program. I think they do a great job. So that's our report from them.
Well said. Any other updates? Okay. Next is Award of Honor guidelines. Dr. Hefner?
Thank you, Chairman Argüés. I'm just going to read the guidelines. This is the time of year, every year that we promote the Award of Honor, and we do not have any nominations sitting waiting for a committee to consider. So I just say that in hopes that this year, nominations will be made. The Alexander County Board of Education has established the Award of Honor in order to recognize those individuals who have made exceptional contributions to Alexander County schools. This award represents the highest honor that the Board of Education can bestow. Criteria for the selection of this award shall be based on exceptional contributions to the Alexander County school system or any of its individual schools in the areas of academics, athletics, administration, student achievement, or community service to the schools. The contributions may include recognition on a regional, statewide, or national level, as well as local notoriety, and shall have allowed our children the chance, not only to grow and meet their full potential, but to excel as well. The final yardstick by which all nominees shall be judged as to the merit of his or her application is the positive effect on the quality of education in Alexander County as recognized by fellow students, teachers, administrators, and the community in general. The guidelines are as follows. A committee shall be established to receive and screen recommendations for this award. Neither current Board of Education members nor current school system employees are eligible for the award. The final decision shall be made by the Alexander County Board of Education. Nominees may be made from the second week in February through the second week in March each year. Nominations will be kept on file for up to three years. Each individual nominated must have a minimum of three letters of recommendation by non-immediate family members. The award shall be given annually at the time determined by the Board of Education. And lastly, nomination forms are available at the Alexander County Board of Education office. Thank you.
I hope we get a lot of applicants. That, that was a huge honor a couple of years ago to see Aaron Spry be recognized with that. And I know we've had a lot of great individuals over the years. I hope folks will consider nominating someone.
Where's the list of previous award winners, Dr. Hefner?
They're on the wall as you exit the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is the superintendent's report. Dr. Hefner?
Thank you. You have several attachments in today's agenda, and I will reference those. Hopefully, you'll be able to pull them up. I've noticed a little lag in trying to open up attachments and different things in the agenda, so my apology for that. But the first thing that I want to start with is that School Nutrition received an innovative breakfast grant totaling $33,649 for equipment to help with distribution of breakfast and increase participation in the School Nutrition program. The second shout-out also goes to Kathy Caudle's team. They applied to become a host for the North Carolina K-12 Culinary Institute this summer, and we were selected. There will be chefs here training managers in deficient culinary techniques. It's a teach-it-forward training, or a teach-it-forward type training model. Child nutrition staff will be receiving training as well as how to use tools and equipment in their kitchens. And then the third bullet for School Nutrition is that we're going to be celebrating National School Breakfast Week, the week of March 4th through the 8th. Then I'm going to transition to my fourth bullet. For those of you who are not aware of this, February is CTE Month. And that is the month we celebrate the achievements and contributions that career and technical education programs provide in preparing students for high-skill, high-wage, and in-demand careers. Here are some highlights from our CTE program in Alexander County. Crystal Hope received notification recently that we will be awarded a couple of significant grants. One is a Tobacco Trust Fund grant totaling $17,875, and that will fund a storage facility for the Ag program. Another is an innovative grant from the Education and Workforce Innovation Commission. For this, we're being awarded $60,000 that will be used for equipment, props, and training grounds for the Fire Academy. Also, an elective fair was held on February 8th at ACHS, which featured many of the CTE programs, as well as other electives at the high school. CTE program areas showcased some of the projects they do, as well as had student representatives currently in the courses available on-site. This was well-attended by rising freshmen and their parents, so we're excited about that. And then also, I, as a superintendent, am very proud because the CTE program was highlighted for their Mobile Career Lab in the North Carolina Association of Superintendents' update, which goes out to all superintendents in the state every Sunday afternoon. The CTE Mobile Career Lab visits elementary and middle schools, offering hands-on experiences aligned with high school career pathways. Students rotate throughout stations where they can use power tools, interact with animal models, learn how to write checks, utilize healthcare tools like thermometers and blood pressure cuffs, and much, much more. The vision of CTE in Alexander County schools is careers for all. Thus, the addition of the CTE Mobile Career Lab helps ensure that students are exposed at an early age to career and technical education pathways and career possibilities. I have attached the flyer that was used in the superintendent's update, and you can see that. Also, you can access a video about the mobile lab with the link that I have listed for you. Now, this next bullet is something that started today, and I'm so jazzed about this. The CTE Department, they're hosting an online auction on the CTE Facebook page starting today and ending on February 17th. There are many student products, such as pillows and tote bags made by the apparel students, desserts that have been made by the foods students, wall hangings by interior design students, cutting boards, keepsake boxes, and metal art, all designed and made by the Ag students, and Adirondack chairs and dog houses that have been made by our carpentry students. The auction also has gift certificates and donations from local businesses. The proceeds of this auction will go towards CTE student organizations to help with field trips and student competitions. Please go to the CTE Facebook at A-C-S-C-T-E-1, and then share that event with your friends on Facebook, or however you can share it by word of mouth. And then I would encourage everybody listening to bid on items also. I think you'll be most impressed. I would like for you to open up the Sugarloaf Project update. It is the third link in your agenda. This is the update on that project at Sugarloaf for the month of January. And it shows, I've just been so impressed with this particular company, just the way that they provide an update with pictures. A picture sometimes speaks volumes. And you can see progress being made throughout the month of January. If you're driving by, you see that outside shell that has taken shape. They go through detail, you know, with their bullets, on the dates. You can look at those things. Lastly, on the last slide, you'll see that they give, that we have had since the beginning of the project in August, 10 days that have been weather-related delays for us. But despite those delays, they are still anticipating that, that we'll finish on time. So that's always a good thing.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Any questions about the Sugarloaf project?
And project creep-wise, in terms of cost, everything's online?
Everything is online at this point, yes.
Have we had minimum disruptions at school? I would assume nothing's been a real disruption to school during the day.
No, no. They've been wonderful to work with. And when I run into the guys, the superintendent of the project, he will talk about how nice everyone is at the school, to the point that I'm wondering, do they work with schools where they're not nice? I can't imagine that, but maybe they do. But he's very complimentary of the children and the staff at Sugarloaf, as far as... But he's very complimentary of the children and the staff at Sugarloaf, as far as just so easy to get along with. Bullet number six, please mark your calendars. Ms. Nash and I have scheduled the board meeting to Ellendale for Friday, February 23rd, beginning at 11:30. I hope all of you will be able to attend. And then in the February report, that is also an attachment in the agenda, if you don't care to click on that for me. This is a monthly report that I provide. You can see that enrollment, you see those numbers, December, and then compare January. I do want to note in that enrollment, we had 27 early graduates in December. You heard Ms. Johnson talk about, you know, they had a couple of those, but 27? I've been doing this a long time, and that's a pretty large number to graduate in December. So that's a good thing, but you see--
We still want to--
Yes. But that's not unusual. And the reason why your numbers go up a little bit during this time period is that families, if they are going to make a move in a transition to a school, they'll do it at the end of a semester--
Okay.
--or the end of a nine weeks. So that's, you know, what I attribute some of that to. I was very proud to see that bus ridership, we're up 13 students in the afternoons. I want to just encourage you to use this every month to track some data. One thing I want to call your attention to, again, I talked about it last month, is the work of the Family Academy. District staff, they're working on those efforts, and they met, again, with the group, RTI. It's a grant-funded organization who's helping with the planning of our Family Academy. And the personnel from that organization say they have never seen such a positive response rate with surveys for parents and for staff. The group works with districts across North Carolina, and I'm sure beyond North Carolina. But again, I just want to shout out to our families. We had 409 family responses to our survey, and the survey was offered in English and Spanish. And we also, I want to shout out to the staff, we had 203 staff responses, and that was way more than they anticipated. As I reported in January, the feedback from those surveys will be included with the responses from the parent advisory groups at each school, and then all of those meetings at the school level are wrapping up this month. Some of the themes that we've already heard parents express an interest in, they want more information about how to help their child with schoolwork and how to build their child's confidence. Also, some concerns were voiced about internet and drug abuse awareness. I know that even just devices, staying on top of social media and different things, that's quite a challenge for the most-involved parent, but we're hearing those topics of interest that they have risen to the surface. The Family Academy Steering Committee will meet later this week with Andrea Robinett and Dr. Danita Dalrevis. They're going to analyze all the feedback that they've gotten from all the parties, and then they're going to start putting together some of the content for what families have told us that they are interested in. Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, unfinished business. Ms. Sharon Mahaffey, our chief financial officer, is going to speak about proposed Board of Education policy revisions.
We are all glad that Kathy has the culinary chef coming, and we're hoping that she invites us to be the taste testers.
I was just saying, if she needs any taste testers, we've heard that we have a lot of offers, yes.
We have three policies up for second reading tonight. Staff-student relations, 40/40. Immunizations and health requirements for school admissions, 41/10, and child abuse and related threats to child safety, 42/40. I have asked principals and directors for input. I received no suggestions, and so I would ask for approval on second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the policies as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
They're approved. So we've approved, as a board unanimously, Policy 40/40, Policy Number 41/10, and Policy Number 42/40. Thank you.
We have five policies for first reading tonight. Rental involvement, student searches, survey of students, distribution and display of non-school materials, and daily deposits. I will request feedback and bring those back next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is head start carryover request. Ms. Kathy Neff?
Good evening. You have been presented, I believe, a copy of the carryover budget justification, and also a budget summary of the categories for the carryover. I am here tonight requesting board approval to carry over the unobligated funds from last program year to current program year. The amount of funds is $92,665.
Are there any questions from the board? What is the pleasure of the board as we move forward?
I make a motion to approve the request. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next topic is our search firm selection. As we discussed last week in the board's agenda, we had four options available to us as board members. And what I'm doing is I'm passing out a sheet to be filled out by each one of board members as to what is their choice for which way to proceed with our search options. Obviously, I'm passing this out for all board members to have. After we've had our discussion and our conversations and points being made back and forth amongst all of us, I would ask that you please fill this out with your name, the date of today, and the signature of what is your choice. I will tabulate those. If, once tabulating the choice, we have any one that hits four or greater board members supporting, that will constitute an approval by the board with said search firm or option. So the floor is open for discussion. Any questions or comments from anyone?
So, just to understand this paper, we're not going to be voting in the public for this?
Well, we will afterwards. It was recommended to me that we do this by ballot, and then I'll read out, once I receive everybody's feedback--
You're going to read it here.
I'll read who voted--
Gotcha. Okay, I wasn't sure what was going on with that. Okay. So I'll just make a statement. Again, I have a concern about spending money for this type of expense when our next topic is talking about a RIF. So that's just my thoughts on it.
I also have the same concern. I know Chris Campbell had recommended some options that would be less cost. I feel like the board should really consider that and not be willing to spend a lot of money if we're going to have to think about making cuts. I would rather put our money in personnel than a firm to bring us people if we can avoid that.
Well, I don't think you can avoid it, Scott. That's just my opinion. I think, you know, we need a firm to assist us, to help us find the best candidate for our town, our community, and our teachers, and our parents.
Something that Mr. Campbell mentioned to us last week was that we could do an interim, and that he could even offer some suggestions for an interim that we could interview ourselves so that we could have someone capable to run this school system for the next year after Dr. Heffner leaves, or whatever timeframe we decide. I guess we just seem to be putting the gas on everything, and there's no brakes anywhere. And I just feel like we're jumping into things so quickly when we have another option to be able to possibly do an interim and just slow the train back a little bit.
One of the things that jumped out to me last week, Chris Campbell shared, was, you know, even, I mean, it's February, and he even made the statement, you know, even starting in February, we potentially wasn't even looking at July 1st. So I see concerns about starting. This is not an easy process to go through, and I think when he stated that, kind of reiterated the amount of time and effort that has to go into this process.
Yeah, and one way to look at this is, I do see the cost and those kind of things, but we have to look at it as a potential investment, as far as who is going to lead the largest employer of Alexander County. And it is my hopes that with choosing one of these firms, or which direction we, or I can say me, I do not want to take the wind out of anybody's sails. We know that there is, we've seen the data that's been presented tonight, which is evident by the strong core leadership that we have in our schools. And we know that there is local folks that may be interested, and we want to make sure that whichever direction, you know, the board chooses tonight, that those individuals that are interested know to make sure to apply, you know, for that position. Because that's one thing that we, as a board, will be able to receive. It is my understanding, and you correct me, Mr. Chair, that we would be able to get input from the community, is what, you know, they see in having the characteristics and the trait of our next superintendent.
I would also like to ask, are there other companies that do this? We, as a board, did not direct these companies to be chosen, so are there others that we could look at? I don't know. I'm asking because I wasn't in the conversation about how these companies, these recruiting companies, were selected.
Who? You've been on the board for a while, if you don't mind me asking. You've been on the board when the superintendent was selected. Who, what groups was used, or was it a group prior?
The Board of Education advertised, and we set our own interviews, and we didn't pay a recruiting service.
Didn't use no services.
Uh-uh.
Well, if we're going to try to do this on our own, we just don't have the manpower or the time to do it. I mean, that's another, you know, need for a firm to farm this out to people that have the resources and the knowledge and the contacts that we don't have to fill this position.
I think that we've spoken quite a few. Are you done speaking?
Yeah, I'm done.
I think that we've spoken quite a few times about, there's a lot going on. There's a lot of moving pieces. A lot of change has happened with Dr. Heffner retiring, and we have the budget issues. And I think that all ties to risk, right? And risk is really the biggest issue. And by going to a firm that has a proven depth of field in this category, who has many contacts, that can give us that kind of feedback, devoid of the fact that we agree violently amongst us that we have great people inside of our team, and we encourage many of you, and you know who you are, to apply and to post your candidacy for this. In order to address risk, we want to be able to broaden our pool of talent as we're searching, not just statewide, but perhaps even to adjoining states, and to work with people that have those networks. And so the people that we've brought to the table here have those networks. They come at different costs. They come at different risks of success in being able to execute the search, and that's why we wanted to share this with all of us early last week, so we could digest it and then have this conversation. But, once again, just like Mr. Reese had shared with everyone, the fact that we're talking about bringing recruiters doesn't mean that we're closed off, that talent inside of our county and our school systems doesn't exist. We absolutely believe that. And that's why one of the first steps upon defining what the job spec is, if you look on the documents that we posted last week, one of the first steps is to define a job spec, and then thereafter to start communications internally within the system, as well as externally within the community and posting, and to the major publications and online tools in Lake North Carolina School Board Association and many of the others that are out there. Okay, so, we, please ask and welcome that you aggressively pursue these opportunities. Do we have any comments, more questions on the subject? Thank you very much. May I ask you to put the tabulation as I read the most?
Yes.
I have seven ballots before me, each representing each board member. The first one is Mr. Scott Bowman. His selection is Campbell Shatley. The second one is Mr. Anthony McLean. His selection is Campbell Shatley. The third one is Mr. Reese. His selection is Masonboro Group. The fourth one is Mr. Raimi Robinson. His selection is the Masonboro Group. The fifth is Mr. Josh Degenhart. His selection is the Masonboro Group. We have Ms. Bridget Ryan, the seventh one. Her selection is look for an interim solution. And last is myself, Robert Goyas. My selection is Masonboro Group.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to have Matt Reese run this project.
One step at a time. May I ask us to stop, because we need to officially tabulate this as a vote--
Okay.
--in which direction to go soon. So, we have four votes for Masonboro Group. We have two votes for Campbell Shatley. We have one vote to continue with another option, which is use an interim. So therefore, we have 4/7 majority. Masonboro Group is the decision of the board. Now, I'm sorry--
Yeah, I thought we were ready to move forward. I make a motion to have Assistant Chair Matt Reese project manage this process, to be the liaison with Masonboro Group and the board, to provide continuous updates weekly going forward. I make a motion.
The motion is to have a point person assigned by the board?
That's correct.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Can I have some discussion?
Of course, of course.
Sorry. Do we just want one person for that? Do we want a committee? It's the pleasure of the board. Nothing against Matt doing it, but, I mean, just, we have committees for lots of other things.
Sure.
I could go for a committee with a lead or a chair, you know, to report out.
I think it would be a good move to take the pressure off of Matt. You don't want to be the good guy or the bad guy in this, so a committee would definitely, I think, relieve you a little bit of the stress of this.
So do we need to nominate each committee member to be in this committee?
I nominate Matt.
Okay. So, Matt being the first member of the committee, we have a second--
I nominate Bridget Ryan.
Do we have a second for Bridget Ryan?
I'll second.
Very well. Other members of the committee? So we have the committee right now being Matt Reese, Bridget Ryan. Do we have any other nominations for members of the committee?
I nominate Raimi.
I was going to nominate Scott.
Do we have a second for Raimi?
Second for Raimi.
Do we have a second for Scott? So therefore, the search committee will be Mr. Robinson, Ms. Ryan, and Mr. Reese. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So we'll proceed forward with that committee. I will assign the chairman of that committee as we go forward with that search activity. I'll inform the committee after conversation with the three of us, or four of us altogether, sometime during the course of next week. In the meantime, we'll need to notify the recruiter that we're moving forward with this as soon as and as quickly as possible, because the critical path on the timeline was to have communication go out to them by the 15th, which means that we would need to connect inside of 48 hours to define who the chairman of that committee is gonna be. Okay? Very well. So then we shall continue forward to, I'm sorry, I just missed my point here. Next point is the reduction in force plan. The activity is to be presented by Mr. Josh Degenhart, who is our chairman for the Budget Committee. Josh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Argüés, Dr. Hefner, board members, Assistant Chair Reese, community members. In my day-to-day life, I set expectations with radiologists, with customers, and that's really what I want to do tonight, is set expectations with the community. You know, there's a sense of urgency, but we're moving forward calmly and boldly. Just taking a step back, in October, the board set expectations in the auditorium that we be transparent. A foundation was constructed for ACHS budget reform. From there, the administration set up community meetings, sit meetings at each school to gather From those meetings birthed a heat map that Dr. Hefner presented to us back in December that targeted certain areas. The number-one area on that heat map was consolidate or cut positions. On January 29th, the Budget Committee met for the first time, myself as chair. I received the data from Dr. Hefner on the roles, the 1.5 million enrolls. We had a special call meeting last week to let the community know. It was kind of a 30,000-foot view of what steps we're gonna be taking. And again, just trying to set expectations with the community. So tonight, we're here, and I use this word a lot at work, we're gonna get more granular, we're gonna get deeper in the data, continue down the same path, to be honest, with the community. In accordance with Policy 7920 and Policy 8100, I want to present the next steps of the Budget Section, and there'll be three things we're gonna do here tonight. Number one, Dr. Hefner is gonna outline her plan. This is her plan, and she's gonna outline it for us. Number two, my colleagues here, they're gonna have an opportunity to speak their opinion, because that's important, for everybody here to speak on this topic. And number three, a motion to kick off Dr. Hefner's plan. So, Dr. Hefner, I provided you with the sheet that you put on the website, and thank you for doing that. If you don't mind to go down that sheet and outline your budget action plan for us all tonight.
Thank you, Board Member Degenhart. As you said, across all groups, be that parents, community, and staff, the one area that received a high rating in every group was to cut or consolidate positions. I also sat in all of those meetings, and I heard people say that they wanted the impact of children to be the least possible. So in doing that, and I was tasked to give a list of positions totaling $1.5 million, these are the proposals that I am making and the overarching reason that they have been made. Starting with six teaching positions at Alexander Central High School, that total, and the money amounts that I'm going to give you, these are estimates dependent upon salaries, because as you all know, depending on the amount of years someone has worked and their qualifications, those numbers could fluctuate a bit. But the total salary savings with those six positions totaled $453,437. The overarching reason is because when you use the state ratio of one teacher to 28 children at the high school level, that when we crunch the current numbers at the high school, they should be allotted 44 classroom teachers, and they currently have 54. So instead of going after all 10 of those teaching positions, I felt like that six would be more fair than going after 10 at one time. Then there is a part-time community position listed with a salary of $25,000, and again, an opportunity for combined work function. Seven clerical positions totaling $383,717. Again, with our school, numbers decreasing, ADM declining is not anything that is new as far as conversation around the table. We have schools that have declined, some even under 200 children, and because of those declining numbers, we felt that opportunities for combined work functions could be a reality. Two itinerant support teachers, the amount totaling $133,247. Again, opportunities for combined work functions because of that declining enrollment. One counselor totaling $88,068, opportunities for combined work functions. One social worker at $63,584, opportunities for combined work functions. Three central office staff, two being certified, one being classified, totaling $286,870. Less essential services, and again, opportunity for combined work. A locally funded position in the CTE area at a salary of $45,044. And then, and the reason that that recommendation was made is that that program should be a self-sustaining program, based on the funds that they currently get, and the way that that happens is months of employment. All of that total, you have 22 positions totaling $1,478,967. I say once again, those estimates are dependent on salary of current personnel, but it gives you a ballpark.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hefner, for outlining your budget action plan. I now would like my colleagues to comment. So the floor is yours tonight.
I can start. I feel like this whole board's been stressed for a long time over this, and it's not gonna be easy, no matter what direction we take. I cannot bring myself, at this point, to look at cutting positions for several reasons. I still believe our county needs to be involved more in this. I feel like just a temporary fix. We're not gonna ask the county to bail us out or to save us. We're asking them to help us in a time of need, and I think that's what they're for. Our county is our only way of getting support. If we could go to the bank and borrow money, I would vote to do it tomorrow, but we can't. So I feel like they need to reach out a little bit and help us until, I feel like they have completely not done that, and we've not had a face-to-face meeting with them. I could just have trouble eliminating that possibility.
They've helped us in the past many times.
Yes, and I feel like they would now, and it's gonna take effort. But I feel like we need to not panic as a board, and we got a lot of problems. We just sat here five minutes ago and talked about replacement of personnel. That's a huge deal. Me and Ms. Ryan's went through that a couple of times, and that's something that is very difficult, and it's gonna take time, and it's gonna take a lot of this board's time. And just to be honest with you, I feel like we're gonna deal with probably more than one person. We could deal with several people that's gonna retire before this is said and done in the next few months, which is gonna add that much more stress to us. I think we should, in my opinion, step back a little bit, let the search be looking for personnel, but we need to put the brakes on laying off employees, and let's buy some time. Next, in just a few minutes, you're gonna hear me from the facilities present, hopefully a sale of a property. That part of that money could help us in the next school year. We're gonna have retirees, that if we don't rehire, we're gonna have quite a bit of savings there. Those two alone, from what I've seen in the past years, could buy us the 24, 25-year, and give us time to find personnel. We need key leaders back here running our show before we start the next big step of making huge cuts. And I just feel like it'd be wise for a board to sit back and buy some time and work with our county, and let them see that we need a little help right now. We're no different than any other department this county has. If social services, or athletics, or any department this county helps was having trouble, they would expect the county to help them. I would, as a taxpayer, I would expect the county to help any department that needs help. And I think every citizen needs to know that, and they need to show our county that we expect that. As a taxpayer, you expect our county to help us when we're in need, and we're in need right now. So I think the board should step back a little bit, give ourselves time to find some people in our administration that's gonna be our new leaders, and work on this budget as we need to, and not slash, I cannot see slashing employees as helping our kids in one way, shape, or form. We're still, our kids are still struggling, our mental health is an issue. Getting rid of employees cannot help our education, in my eyes. So I, as one board member, I'm recommending let's slow down a little bit and use the money that we're gonna save from retirement, the money we're gonna get from a sale, and buy ourselves another year to figure out what's best for us, and not make huge cuts and take 22 people's lives and flip them upside down if we don't have to. We've got good people, and when we lose good people, they're gonna go somewhere, and it ain't gonna be here again. So our kids deserve what we can do best, in my opinion, and I think that is, let's work on getting new leadership in here, then we'll work on budget as we need to.
Mr. Bowman, we don't have to start notifying employees. The first round of notifications is May the 1st. Teachers have to be notified June the 1st. Board members, I would ask you to less table this conversation till the April meeting. By that time, we'll know the money from the building, we'll have time to talk to commissioners, we'll have retirement numbers, and it's not uncommon to get 15 or 20 retirees every year. That may not fix our problem, but we can move people around, and there's no need to disrupt lives and families when we know those retirements are gonna happen. I think we're just going too fast. I would be happy to put that in a motion. If there's some conversation, I mean, are you board members willing to do that? Are you willing to move it to April?
I want to hear from each board member.
I do, too.
Can you restate the date you just stated?
Correct me if I'm wrong, May 1st is the administrative piece.
Notification.
Notification, and June 1st is teacher notification.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but intent forms will be towards 1st of March?
No, we've already collected intent forms.
We sent them out early.
So you've got all that.
We did it early this year, just for that purpose, and those numbers are being compiled. I will say that we did not get a good response rate in a couple of schools, as far as what the staffs, what their intentions were. Dr. Chlor is working with principals to get those from every staff member, and then once that has happened, they can be compiled.
It's not gonna be an easy decision, no matter what happens. And to this point, we've just been tossing around a number, and we've heard feedback from the community. The rubber's getting ready to meet the road if this moves forward, quote unquote. I knew there was dates out there, I'm glad you clarified the dates that notices have to be sent out. Now we've got positions in front of us that we're looking to cut. You know, some of these positions, you know, some of these positions are tied to our community. I mean, they're all tied to our community. Some of them are directly tied in ways with our school system. I would love to have a sit-down, you know, with our county commissioners sometime. I mean, they're great guys, and I'd love to have a sit-down, and just now that we've got positions in front of us, and just, you know, be out front, here's what we're facing, here's actual numbers of these positions at these locations, and what these positions do, and see if there's any help there. You know, I'm gonna tell you, this is one of the toughest, toughest decisions. You know, there's been a lot, you go back to that heat map, there's a lot of stuff, school closure was up there. I wasn't on the board when that came up last time, but the community wants their community scopes. Yeah, that was pretty obvious last time. Positions was high. I would like to us to try to find a way to sit down with our commissioners and just show them, whether something can happen or not is a whole nother thing. But we've got positions, we've got numbers. With that May 1st date of notification, I could support bumping it at least a month and try to schedule a work session with them.
Board Member Degenhart, I would not oppose that either, as myself, but like what Board Member Robinson chaired, the rubber is meeting the road, and no decision that we made is going to be an easy one. We are faced with this task. The thing that burdens me and gives me heartburn is that the fund balance has continued to decline over the years. We can't keep pulling from that year after year. And, you know, yes, the sale of the Wittenberg property will help, but it would be my vision that that would be funds that could help us to put right back in to our fund balance. And, you know, we talk about children first. We need to do that every single day. It doesn't need to be just right here and right now. I'm not opposed to sitting down and having a working session with them, with the commissioners, but, you know, we've, we're faced with a 1.5 million shortfall. We have heard our ADM has been declining. That is nothing that is, that is new. But time after time, we keep coming back, asking commissioners for more money. We've got to be, it's like I said at the last time there we had the special call meeting, we've got to do what we can afford, and, you know, it's gonna take, Josh, you said earlier, we gotta get granular. I mean, that's just, that's just the black and white of it. That's my fault. I am, I would be in favor of sitting down and having a working session, because I do not want people to lose their jobs. I do not. Because our motto that's right back here, it says, "Children first." And, you know, we didn't get where we are overnight, and it's my viewpoint, Mr. Chair, Budget Chair, it's not gonna be fixed overnight either.
Well, I, this is not easy for me. I got a kid in the school system, you know. This is a tough decision, when you're talking about people's livelihoods. My fear is if we bank on a building sale, once that money's gone, we're gonna be right back here having the same discussion two, three years from now, a year from now. Where's it gonna put us down the road if we, and, um, I'm not against a working session or sit-down meeting with the commissioners, I'm not against that at all. I'd be willing to put it out, as it seems the rest of the group. I'm, I'm just worst-case scenario kind of guy that's kind of... I'm, I'm just worst case scenario kind of guy, that's kind of the way I am. You know, if, if that doesn't go through, we got to face the facts, in my opinion. And I, I, I mean, I don't know about the, the building, it's got to stop.
I appreciate everybody's comments. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
We've heard many times repeated that, let's go to commissioners, let's ask them for help and such. And I don't think there is a person on this board that doesn't want to collaborate with our county officials. And I don't believe our county officials do not want to collaborate with us either. I believe that they, they're, we're all partners. What's necessary to have that collaborative conversation is data. We need to have a plan that we can put in front of them and say, this is the quid or the pro in the conversation. This is what's at risk. We have a task that we have to find a million and a half bucks. That doesn't go away. And looking at the sale of a property is only going to give us an infusion of cash. But we're going to be spending at a rate of one and a half million on an annualized basis. On top of that, we will have consumed 900,000 of our fund balances here. That's going to leave us with less than a million dollars in fund balance. Just for perspective, we're a $65 million operation. Right? So that's one sixtieth. That means in two weeks, we go through that money, that million bucks. Just for relative numbers, even though a million dollars is a lot of money. And the size and scale of our operation, it's two weeks worth of operating money. It can vaporize like that. With just a little hiccup, something else happens, we have radical ADM changes next year or the year after. We don't know, right? Let's say that all of a sudden private, private schools kick in. I mean, there could be an and, and, and conditions of what could go wrong in terms of our funding. And if we're not prepared with sufficient fund balance to protect ourselves for those conditions, we're at an insolvency point. We can't afford that. That's, that's us as a board failing to do our job. You know, that's, that's our primary duties as we go forward then. So even though the infusion from a sales looks attractive and it's like, oh, thank goodness, it's really a poison pill. If we don't address our, our cost structure, our structural cost. And then the second point that we have is when we go to our commissioners and have a conversation. We have to have a plan so that we can have a conversation. The purpose of this meeting is to kick off the administration to formulate that plan. Right? It will not be approved by us asking the formulation of the plan. All, all we're doing in this meeting is to say, please put a plan together by X and X date, which we would discuss and agree to.
So I'm confused because I thought this was our plan.
No, this is the way the process works is we ask the administration, gives us a plan. And then we look at the plan and say, this is a high 50,000, 100,000 foot perspective approach. Okay, now tell us the details behind achieving this. And that is the plan. The, the purpose of this meeting is to ask for those details. What are the, you have six teaching positions on the first line. What are the details behind that? You have to go through performance appraisals, you have to go through.
But that's not our job.
No, of course it's not. That's why we ask administration to do that. That's what the point of this, this vote is, to put that plan together.
See, I don't understand that because if this is our plan, if, or, okay, it's not our plan. Whatever your wording is, it's not our plan. Why do we need to vote on it?
Because we're not voting on this, we're voting on the administration to meet behind each one of these lines so that it becomes a plan.
Well, you've got a plan, don't you, for this, Dr. Heffner, don't you?
I'm, I'm, I'm repeating procedure. This is what our procedure, what our process is.
The next step in this process is for me to actually put names by those numbers.
And there's, there's a number of steps that you have to take in order to put those names.
In a RIF, you have to look at performance evaluation, longevity. There's a list of things that you look at and you evaluate and then.
But that's your job.
Yes.
Yes, that's right. No one, no one is stepping on.
Right, but that's why, I don't understand why we have to do it today. If we, we took this list to the commissioners and said.
This, the, the thing is we're getting wrapped around the axle that this is not a plan. This is so high level.
Why are we bothering with it if it's not a plan?
Because this is our process, this is how it starts. That, I mean, the, this is how our procedure that's in our documented processes work.
I, I don't get that then, it doesn't make sense to me. We've spent all this time, we've asked, Dr. Heffner spent hours, I'm sure, putting this together.
I understand.
To save us a million and a half. But if you don't consider this a plan for us to go, we, I could sit down with the commissioners today and say, look. We have this money possibly from a sale, we've got retirements. But if we don't come up with money, this is what's going to happen to our system. And they could either help us or not.
We have done that high level conversation, our communication, saying we have a million and a half dollar problem. This plan has been public since last.
It's not a plan.
Exactly.
You said it.
This document, okay? But the plan that we need to put together so that we have a substantive discussion as to who, what are the roles? Who are the individuals, needs to be formulated by administration. This purpose of this meeting and the purpose of us as a board and following procedure is for us to kick off administration and put a plan together against the million and a half. It's not to approve it, it is not to execute, it is not to go forward and start engaging with a RIF. That is another vote in March or April timeframe, once we've digested what that plan looks like. But when we say time is of the essence, time is of the essence so that we can put the plan together. In line with this high level college strategy, if we want to speak of it that way.
I don't understand doing all that work if we don't, instead of, if, if we can come up with a solution to where we don't have to cut 22 positions. We have to cut seven, whatever the number is. Why would you go through all this work now?
Because we didn't get presented as a board a plan that only reduces seven.
I know, and that's why I'm asking, I'm asking to move this to April so that we can.
We asked for, the board asked for us to receive a plan.
The Budget Committee.
We were asked to receive a plan and this is a plan we got. And so now we're talking about asking for a, let's ask, let's get the meat and potatoes behind this plan so we can have a substantive conversation with our commissioners. And also amongst ourselves as to what the timing and cadence. I can tell you from experience and you hit that right on the head. We're going to have a lot of folks moving on, we're going to have turnover, it's natural, right? We, we've seen that our, that our school systems operated a 10 to 15% annualized turnover rate. You know, we have 600 plus employees in our system. We're 700 plus employees. At 15%, we're talking about 100 people.
That leaves the everybody in turmoil because we're talking about 22 positions.
Because, because you don't hire the replacements and that's part of our direction as a board saying, as we have turnover, we don't hire replacements. So we hard code what roles and what the structure of the organization is to look like. But we can't have that conversation until we know what the plan is. And we can't do the plan for administration because that's for the administration to do.
So why do we need to vote on this?
Because that's the process. That's, that's our policy that we have as a board.
Can I, can I ask for a little clarity, just, just to be sure on this end? So we can, per our board policy, we got a policy. We have to take action on this. This is not final, there's no names being attached to anything or whatever. And we don't even have to take action in March on that. We could take it even in April?
Yes, we choose when we want to kick off the administration and say, go ahead, move forward. Or in the meantime, we could have the Budget Committee working together with Dr. Heffner, fine tune it based on what we're seeing with turnovers.
So there could be some turnaround because of positions, intent forms. There could be, this could be ultimately worst case, but it could improve in, in numbers.
And, but as it changes, we will need to broadcast to the community what the changes are based on whatever the plan is that is prompted from this.
So this, this isn't an end game, this isn't an end game.
The only end game we have is we need to remove one and a half million dollars of costs from our operating structure. Yeah? Our whole school system structure, we can afford the, the 4 million of ESER money less, plus the one and a half million dollars of savings that we have less here. We've already discussed the ESER money and other conversations about how that's going to be managed through a tuition.
By state statute, we have to go through this process with the ESER, excuse me, with the ESER positions as well. This is outside of the 41 positions that we have funded through ESER. So we will have to go through that process as well.
So in summary, what we're talking about here is making a vote to put details behind this high level strategy that was presented to the board in order to not use the word plan.
Thank you.
Okay? A plan will be provided to the board if we so vote today, yeah, by the administration by next board meeting. And then that'll prompt what the next steps need to be and what the activities at the Budget Committee, working together with the board and administration, what that roadmap looks like and execution.
Based on Policy 7920.
And adherence to.
Yes, sir.
So I'm, I'm done, I'm chairing.
Board member Degenhart, do you mind if I read criteria?
Please do.
Costs criteria that will be used in determining the individuals.
Please.
I would like to start with for teachers and administrators. Work performance and evaluation ratings. Area of licensure, program enrollment, service in extra duty positions and ability to fill such positions. Length of service with higher priority given to service in this school system and degree level. Those are the criteria that will be discussed for certified staff being teachers and administrators and/or administrators. Then the next, sorry, I closed out the wrong tab.
And that's per policy.
That is per Alexander County School Board policy.
Criteria that you will use in formulating a plan.
That's how I come up with the names that actually go beside of each of those powers.
Good. Thank you for highlighting that, Dr.
Sure, and then the classified staff, I would like to read that as well. Sorry, it's loading.
Yeah.
Okay, here we go. Classified personnel reduction. The criteria that will be used, job performance as indicated on formal evaluations and other documentation. Degrees, license, or indications of an employee's potential to contribute and progress in the system. Seniority in the same or related position within the system as a whole. And then other criteria determined to be relevant by the superintendent. That other criteria might be attendance rate. How often were they at work? What did their attendance look like, that sort of thing. But that was, is the criteria that will be used for the classified staff.
Thank you, Dr. Heffner. Do we have a motion to kick off Dr. Heffner's?
Can I ask one more question before we have a motion? So if we would table this to next month and we could see retirements, we could see this purchase and know more about a contract on it. And we could go to our county manager and our county commissioners by that point. Hopefully with a lot less number than we're looking here and say, guys, we're not needing a million dollars. We might need two, $300,000, a one-time thing to help us through this. I can't help but think that would be a good, good advice for us as a board to look at. I want our employees to know that we've looked at every option before we say, sorry, we don't need you. I don't want to sit in this seat and say that if there's any way to not do it. So I'm in favor of a table to next month myself. I don't know how the board feels about that, but that's my opinion.
If we do vote to go ahead and start this process, that doesn't say that these 22 peoples are automatically losing their position if we come up with money, money or funding in other place.
You're exactly right.
It could be pulled back, the reins could be pulled back on it a little bit, am I, am I correct?
All we're doing is asking the administration to put together a RIF plan, not execute on said RIF plan.
Right.
Execution on said RIF plan would require an additional vote some point in the future. And at which point in the future, we will also have other data points to be part of our conversation. So it might be modified, right? But the point being is that this activity and moving forward and protecting our financial position as a, as a school system and correcting our cost issue that we have. The, the, it's a, it's a question for the board as to, do we feel that it's a high sense of urgency issue? Or do we think it's something that we can just keep on kicking the can down the road and not worry about it until later? That, that's really the issue, the question to be asked and answered to ourselves and unto ourselves. My personal feeling is it's important enough to be addressed now. Not acted upon because we're not acting on anything right now. Only thing we're doing is asking for the formulation of a plan. But that's data that'll give us a more intelligent situation assessment and give us the best possible vector to protect our balance sheet. To be in compliance with, with, with budgetary and fiscal law and requirements. And thirdly, to just be able to position ourselves for the future.
What does it hurt to get wait one more month?
It's one more month of, of less information that we will have to make a decision. It's one more month of delay that is not necessary.
And I'm trying to get more information to make a decision.
But you're not going to, we don't have more information by waiting a month. Nothing's going to happen if we wait, no, it's not.
We're going to have no retirements, we're going to talk, we're going to have a meeting with commissioners, we're going to know about the sale of the building.
But the sale of the, we're, we're mixing a one-time infusion of cash with a structural issue.
I'm not mixing it. I would spend that money any day of the week to pay for somebody to come to work.
But the point is, is that person is going to be told there is no work a year from now because the cost won't be going away.
But that's a year they can work, that's a year they get to work.
Hopefully our county grows and that's a year.
But we have to change that mindset.
We don't have to.
A lot of people.
The one thing that, and goodness help us, that in that one year, we don't run out of cash. Because this mindset results in bankruptcy. And every time I've seen it at any operation, that mindset results in bankruptcy. And we need to manage this.
On keeping people working every day of the week, I'm sorry.
We want to.
And I'll, I'll make a statement. And, and I pray every day, I'd give anything to David Oden was still alive and was sitting here. Because I guarantee his statement would be, we can't borrow money, we can't do nothing but beg for money. And we're going to do the best we can for our kids. And if we get to a place we can't make it, our county by law has to try to help us get through a situation. And I feel till we get to that point that our county has done everything they can do and we know that 100%, I'm not willing to sacrifice our kids' education over it. If we can kick that can, what others have said, another year, then I'll kick it another year before I let people go. That probably will end up leaving our system and leaving our county, which will cost the county money. And I don't see how that benefits nobody, us or the county.
It's not good for anybody for this to be happening. We need help and we either get it or we don't. If we don't get it, then we make those hard decisions.
One, one thing that it's just absolutely imperative that we make a decision based on, do we feel it's our job to be responsible for the fiscal diligence and fiscal fitness of our school system? I for one say yes, yeah? And kicking the can down the road is antithetical and it's against that, that mantra. We know that we have a problem and we're having a conversation about ignoring it. And as board members and as overseers of the administration and the school system, I think it's our job to make sure that everything is done possible to protect the financial health of our system. And to allow ourselves to get into insolvency and put that, that onto our commissioners, I think it's remiss of our responsibility. We're remiss of our duties if we do that.
I'm not asking us to not do our job. I'm asking us to have every one of us be confident we've done everything in our power before we do something that damages our community and our friends and our families in our community. And that's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for the county to bail us out, I'm asking for help.
Let's have a plan that shows what the magnitude of what happens if no help comes. And that's what we're asking here. If no help comes, this is what it's going to look like. That's the grounding for the conversation. And that's what I'm asking us to put together.
We don't have to have any. We don't have to have any more details than this paper right here to go sit down with our county commissioners and say, this is what our schools are going to lose. Can you help? That's, I don't need any other details. I don't need to know what teachers, what nothing. This list, what, is 22 positions that we're going to lose in our county, it's going to hurt our county and our school system, period.
This list is 22 positions at a 100,000 foot perspective. We have no idea what they are, we have no idea what the impact is, we have no idea what the rules are.
Well, I know it's going to be bad, 22 positions, it's going to be bad in our school system.
But we don't know what the impact of the rules are. My input is that we task, because we know we have to find one and a half million dollars nonetheless, to put this plan together. And then have that. to put this plan together and then have that conversation with that plan. If we want to have a preliminary, that's fine. But we, it's upon us to have this plan. That's my input to this. I'm going in, in circles with it. It just comes down to how other board members feel as well with this.
They need to speak up and say. Because we're sitting here just going back and forth and hearing us.
Well, it's, we, no, it's not. It's just that we're, we're saying the same topics and the input, it really comes down to the rest of our board.
That's right.
How y'all feel. And the question then comes down, and Chairman Daganhart, I'm sorry, I'm taking over your.
No, you're not taking over. I mean, this is what we needed. We needed dialogue between everyone so we can hear, like, what our opinions are. And we need to put this to a motion. I mean, that, like, we need to figure that out, whether we're gonna do it or not. So are we ready for that, to, to put this to a motion for Dr. Heffner to kick off a strategy?
Well, I would like to make a motion that we move it to March so we can gather more information.
I second that motion.
All in favor of moving it to March, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. The motion fails. Next motion?
One more time, a motion to kick off Dr. Heffner's, uh, strategy. Do I have a motion on the floor to kick it off?
So moved. So moved. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Aye.
The ayes have it. And then, this is not final, so there will be another time in front of us in the future, correct? Just to clarify one more time. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, we will have a Budget Committee meeting?
We will need to schedule a Budget Committee meeting. Please, if you could help us facilitate that so we could start this process and start formulating.
Okay, we'll talk about calendars.
And I need to be a part of that discussion since I'm doing, since I'm doing the late work.
Yes, you are the point person.
This is not something that's done overnight.
Would you prefer to be the one to schedule the next Budget Committee?
I would prefer that, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Heffner.
Very well. Okay, Scott, now on a fun topic, I think you have a facilities update.
I do. Board members, I'm gonna present a contract that we are proposing for the board to hopefully approve for the old Wittenberg property. That property's in two parcels. There's a tract that's 7.3 acres and a tract that's 1.50 acres. We're proposing to sell that to a company called Barrel X Development Group.
There he is, I pulled it up.
And that purchase price is $600,000. This group is putting $30,000 deposit down. And they're asking for a 105-days inspection period just to do inspections and all the things they need on their end with a 30-day closing period. The seller, the broker is Jenny Eckert with Commercial First, and the buyer's name is Kenneth Ordoff. I would ask from the Facilities Committee that the board would approve us getting a contract signed and on its way for this period to do inspections and to make this happen. So I'm asking for a approval. I make a motion, we approve this request.
I second.
Do we have a first and second? All in favor of proceeding forward with the offer? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it unanimously to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So very well, that concludes the open session of today's meeting. Thank you all for participating in all the communications and exchange. Have a great evening.